Good evening. We are going to call the meeting to order. And if we could all please rise, Councilmember Brandon McCullough is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'll let you through before I stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very, thank you very much, and thank you very much, Councilmember McCullough. Good evening, and welcome to the 1,924th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting minute meeting, and minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on Monday, July 26, 2021. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Present.
Councilmember Toy?
Here.
Vice President Barr?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Present.
President McIntyre?
Here. We have all seven members of council with us this evening. At this time, we have the presentation of the minutes from the 1,923rd regular meeting of the City Council that was held on June 28, 2021. Council?
Madam President?
Councilmember Jolly, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the minutes to reflect that Item 212-21, which is concerning the placement of a potential mural on the back of a building at this intersection of Seven Mile and Middle Belt Roads, that that mural would be subject to ZBA approval.
Support? Go ahead. All right. We have support. Any further discussion?
I'll just say, this is something that our always-on-the-ball legal team within City Hall noticed that we needed to clean house, just to make sure that we did things the right way, and did not usurp our own ordinances here. So I think it's the appropriate thing to do.
Thank you. Thank you for the resolution. And, Mr. Burnier, thank you to you and the legal team for catching that.
Michael Fisher, no surprise.
Thank you to Assistant City Attorney Michael Fisher for catching that, which is, although it might seem trivial to people that we make these small corrections, it's very important to all of us that our minutes always accurately reflect what happened in a meeting, and call out any, if we say we're going to do something, that the minutes accurately note what is required in order for us to do that. So, thank you. Madam Clerk, if there's no further discussion, if no one in the audience would like to comment on that, on the adjustments to the minutes, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on the amendment to the minutes? Thank you.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye. And it's been so long since we've done this. Does that, was that the vote on the minutes and the amendment, or do we need a separate?
That was just on the amendment.
Okay, so we need, we do need another?
So moved.
All right, so, all right, so now we have Councilwoman Toy and Councilmember Jolly have moved to approve the minutes as they were written incorporating the amendment. Any discussion? Any other corrections? One from the audience? All right. Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on approval of the minutes from the 1,923rd meeting from June 28?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye. And the minutes are approved. At this time, I go to the council if anyone has any personal announcements, tributes, or recognitions they'd like to make.
Madam Chair.
Councilmember Toy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to announce to our viewing audience that tail waggers, who, those of you that aren't familiar with it, they help a lot of animals in our community and give out food and the shots for the different animals, cats, dogs, whatever, and they're celebrating their 10th anniversary already. And they just moved to Middle Belt Road between 5 and 6. And if any of you have any kind of issues getting your dogs or cats or whatever vaccinated, they're a great place to go, and they're very helpful and reasonable as well. So just a heads up on them. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Toy. Anyone else? All right. I have just, well, we'll start first. I think Councilmember Toy, you have the list of retirees?
I do, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You can read that, and then I'll return to mine.
Certainly. The retirees for June from our great city is Darnell Shrewd-Craft. He's a public service worker, one, from DPW, 13 years. He'll be retiring. Daniel McKinnon, police captain, for 35 years. Congratulations to both these gentlemen. James Vorman, senior police officer after 25 years. And James Foster, he was a maintenance mechanic, too, for the Livonia Housing Commission for 29 years. That concludes that. Madam Chair.
Thank you, and we wish all those retirees a very happy and healthy retirement. I have a birthday, official birthday to announce. Our city clerk, Susan Nash, will be celebrating a birthday in two days, on July 14. So happy birthday, Susan, and we certainly appreciate, and I know many in this city appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you very much.
And council appreciates all your work and your friendship.
These birthdays seem to come faster and faster.
Well, enjoy your, enjoy your day, and I have to take-
That 29th again and again.
And I need to make a personal birthday wish to my youngest son, Patrick, who will turn 18 on July 25. And he is away on a Philmont excursion with Boy Scout Troop 782. And the Boy Scout Troop 782 has been making this trip to Philmont, New Mexico, where there's a Boy Scout lodge or Boy Scout ranch. And the part of the trip entails, I think, a nine or 10-day hike, where you just, you know, you just have what's on your back. I do believe there's a truck that goes with tents, but what Troop 782 does, a lot of the kids from around the country, a lot of the troops fly in to New Mexico. Troop 782 has always chosen to drive. And so they make a, they make an amazing trip out to New Mexico. As of Sunday, he had already been to the Green Giant statue in Minnesota, Mount Rushmore, and Crazy Horse. So, happy birthday to Patrick, and wishing safe and wonderful experience to all the Boy Scouts and troop members and parents from 782, which is a large Livonia trip. So thank you for that, council. The one other announcement that I have to make this evening is we have a commendation for Julius Barber Shop. And do we have, if you would, if you would come down, please? I would like to read, if you'd like to first stand at the podium, I'd like to read the commendation. This is from the offices of the mayor and city council, "Whereas Julius Barber Shop has been a successful Livonia business since September 7, 1945, and was owned by Julius Zokola," and I hope I pronounced that close. "He operated the shops with his two brothers, Alex and Irving, and whereas the second owner, Daniel Farugia," was that close? Yes. Thank you, "took over ownership and sold the shop on June 15, 2002, to Ramon Reyes and Alex Alvarado, and the three ran the shop together until the passing of Mrs. Alvarado. And whereas Barber L., as Alex Alvarado was known, treated every kid that entered the shop as his own, hanging their school and sport pictures on the wall, supporting the Girl Scouts by allowing them to sell cookies at his shop, and painting the nails of the daughters of his clients. And whereas, L. was also a DJ and played, always played lively music in the shop, and it was very common to find him in front of Julius Barber Shop strumming his guitar in a beautiful day. And whereas the community and longtime clients of Julius Barber Shop are very saddened by the sudden loss of Alex, who unexpectedly passed away in November 2020, with the shop now being solely run by Alex's father. I," and it would be the mayor, Maureen Miller-Brosnan, mayor of the City of Livonia, County of Wayne, State of Michigan, "do hereby take this means to join with the Livonia City Council to recognize Julius Barber Shop and their longstanding presence in the City of Livonia, and extend our heartfelt gratitude for its many years of dedication to the community." So, thank you. I don't know if you'd like to, if you'd like to say any words?
Well, I'd just like to thank everybody that's supported us at the Barber Shop since we've owned it since 2002. You know, we have customers that have been there for 20 years now with us, and we've had Christmas parties for the kids every year.
Wow. Fantastic. Well, since you're up there, would you like to give us the address?
29163 Five Mile Road.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Vice President Barr?
It'd probably be worth noting, too, for those that didn't catch before, that Julius Barber Shop's going to be having a block party for their 75th anniversary. Is that next weekend, or the weekend after, maybe?
The 24th.
The 24th?
Yes.
So July, the Saturday, Saturday afternoon of the 24th, if I remember right, it's noon to 6:00, or something like that?
It's from 1 till 5:00, and it's Christmas in July, so.
1 till 5:00 over near Middle Belt and Five Mile, so.
Join us with your friends.
Go celebrate one of Livonia's great barber shops. Thanks.
Yes, and thank you very, very much, and also condolences on the loss of Alex. But, amazing family with an amazing business.
We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And if you'd like to come down, we'd be happy to present this to you, and if you'd like to shake everyone's hands, I don't know if you want to do that. Some people like to shake our hands, some people don't. Thank you so much.
Much congratulations.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. And to you?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We hope to see you on the 24th.
I'm not there anymore. Margie?
No.
Yeah?
Couldn't hear you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
We'll hope to see you on the 24th.
Come party with us.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
My grandfather was a barber for 35 years.
I don't need haircuts anymore.
Grandfather will give you a couple of those.
Doesn't say that Marjorie got a haircut like that?
Thank you. And I will say that's, that's, we do a lot of work in city council. We cover a lot of work and business in our meetings. One of the nicest things we get to do is to acknowledge special people and special businesses and organizations in our community. All right. At this time, it's my pleasure and privilege to introduce our department heads. Beginning on my left is Mr. Todd Zalunsek, our Director of Engineering. Next to him is Mr. Mark Terramina, our Director of Economic Development and Planning. Next to Mark is Sarah Kasparich, our Manager of the City Council Office and City Council Business. Continuing on my right is Ms. Susan Nash, our City Clerk. Next to her, LaShawn Thomas, our Director of Governmental Affairs. And finally, to my far right is Mr. Paul Burnier, our City Attorney. I don't see any other department heads who are with us this evening, but thank you to all of you for being here every meeting and helping bring the residents of the city the best possible meaning with the complete information. At this time, we go to audience communication, as we always do at the beginning of every meeting, and I'm going to ask our parliamentarian, the Honorable Kathy White, if she would read the rules for audience communication as she does at every meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the public audience at the meeting shall not speak until they are recognized by the chair. Each person recognized by the chair to address the council shall identify himself or herself by name, and if appropriate, group affiliation. A person addressing council on an item on the agenda shall be limited to two minutes, unless the period of time is extended by a majority of the council present, and shall be recognized to speak prior to council's consideration of the item. There will be an audience communication section of not more than 30 minutes duration at the beginning of all council regular and study meetings, where citizens may address the council. There will also be an audience communication section at the end of all regular and study council meetings, where citizens may address the council on any matter that is not on the agenda of that meeting. Citizens who wish to expand upon their remarks will be asked to reduce the matter to writing and submit it to the city clerk, and such item may be placed on a future council study session for further consideration. A person addressing council under the audience communication portion of the agenda will be limited to a total of three minutes at each study or regular meeting, unless the period of time is extended by a majority of the council present. A person may address the council once during audience communication. If the person has addressed the council during the first audience communication period at the beginning of the meeting, the citizen will not be permitted to address the council again during any audience communication period at the end of the meeting. Anyone addressing the council shall make responsible comments. Personal, impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks are not permitted, and anyone causing a breach of the peace may be removed from the meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember White. So at this time, if there's anyone who would like to communicate with the council on any item not on this evening's agenda, we invite you to the podium, and we ask you to share with us your name and your address.
Nancy Klein, 33373, Myrna Court. At the last council meeting, I took a stand that I would not resign from the Commission on Aging after 18 dedicated years. However, it was a decree from the mayor. I received a letter that I will share with you from the mayor. Dear Ms. Klein, your paid position as a building supervisor at Greenmead Historical Park has become a conflict of interest to your service on Livonia Commission on Aging. Therefore, we ask that you step down from your seat on this commission effective immediately. I then called the mayor, and I questioned what this conflict of interest was. I never received a response or an answer, so therefore, this was never an issue for 18 years, so therefore, I questioned the mayor's motives. Several days later, I received another letter, this time terminating me from the Commission on Aging. I will share that letter with you. Dear Ms. Klein, I received your voicemail and comments from the city council meeting on Monday, June 28, 2021, and am writing to explain. Your appointment to the Commission on Aging has been terminated. I apologize for the lack of clarity in my original letter. I was attempting to provide you with an opportunity to gracefully resign your position. Your comments at the city council meeting and in your voicemail would indicate that you have no such intent. Therefore, I will be exercising my authority established in Section 236040 of the ordinance which governs the Commission on Aging. The City of Livonia is grateful for your many years of service on the Commission of Aging. You have worked to enrich the lives of aging residents who regularly are served by Livonia Senior Center. The focus of the Commission on Aging is broader than simply the activities at the Livonia Senior Center. Therefore, the administration is working to assimilate a commission with expertise in a broader range of senior services, with a vision for new opportunities to address the needs of our lifelong residents, to ensure that we remain competitive with nearby growing Two new appointees have been added to the Commission on Aging, neither of which have never attended a Commission on Aging, neither has the mayor. One of those particular individuals is married to one of the staff members who happens to be also running, maybe perhaps, for city council, Dan Centers. I would say that that might be a conflict of interest. I hope that these individuals have a desire from their heart, and they are not being motivated by politics. I hope that their expertise background qualifies them for the position. My father was a World War II hero. He would tell me, Nancy, fight like the devil for democracy and freedom. The seniors, the residents, the volunteers have a voice. They will be heard. They have opinions. They will not be canceled. My father's bravery and love of country is the wind beneath my sail. Thank you for your time and opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Thank you. All right. Would anyone else like to address the council? Would you like to, maybe we'll alternate? I think this gentleman was coming down. Would you, sir? And, yeah, just, just grab that seat on the end, and then we'll go to you next.
This microphone is portable?
Let's, can you reach her? There we go.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Catherine, do you want to direct him?
Would you like to, would it be, would it be easier if we moved the podium? Are we able to put that microphone, Todd, on the side of the?
Do you want to hold it? Can I move it, please?
Hello.
Is that better if you guys can see?
There, thank you.
Hello, my name is Charles Blackwell. I'm a Detroit, Michigan resident. I'm here to speak about the Blackwell versus City of Livonia lawsuit that is currently in the Michigan Court of Appeals. That lawsuit is about the mayor hiding her Facebook page from public disclosure under the Freedom of Information Act. Now, her Facebook page is titled Livonia Mayor, but she wants the court to believe that it's her campaign page. Well, she just won the election one year ago. What is she still campaigning on? Politicians love to, you know, distribute reelection flyers that says, I am transparent, open government, but when they get in office, they like to hide, you know, Facebook messages. And it, you know, begs the question, why is she costing the taxpayers money if she has nothing to hide in her Facebook messages? Thank you.
Thank you. And I will, I will point out that I believe on everything that we, that we publish, there's indication that if you contact our, I'm going to read it as a matter of fact, and I, I'm sorry that the microphone is not convenient, but I do want to read this, because this is on every agenda and everything the city publishes with respect to our open meetings. In accordance with Title II of the American with Disabilities Act, as it pertains to access to public meeting, the city clerk's office of the City of Livonia, upon adequate notice, will make reasonable combinations for persons with special needs. Please call, and it has the number of 4662236, or email the clerk if you need assistance. So, that's, that's why we didn't have the microphone positioned for someone who is not able to stand to speak. So, anyway, but thank you. All right, next.
My speech got a little longer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Anyway, before I start, I would like to ask if I may have an extension, because I am dealing with allergy issues right now, and I think I'm going to be able to talk a little slower rather than my usual speed. So I'm asking for maybe just a small extension to get-
First, would you tell us who you are, please?
Yes. My name is Irene West, and I, and I live at 37639 Kingsbury.
Okay. And how much additional time would you like, Ms. West?
Maybe a minute and a half, or two minutes more.
Okay. Are there any objections to giving Ms. West an additional two minutes? All right, if our parliamentarian would please note that the time is extended to five minutes. And thank you for making that request at the beginning. It, it helps things flow.
Oh, yes.
So, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. It was 57 years ago that my husband and I were delighted to find property in Newburgh Heights subdivision, where we began the process of building our house, a house that I live in today. Though it seems a long time ago historically, we are custodians of our small parcel of land for a very short time. But we are more than custodians. I believe, as we, the older generation, are also sentinels in identifying problems today that would affect the younger and future property owners in our city. I'm here today to address such a problem, and that is the present tree planting program. Before construction began last fall on replacing the roadway on Kingsbury, my curbside tree was removed. In fact, our street is devoid of most of its mature trees. Shortly after my tree was removed, I received a letter from Douglas Moore regarding the procedure for getting a new tree. This communication stated that the new tree will be sized to fit the right-of-way. We were provided with three lists, one for trees and easements over 10 feet, one for easements less than 10 feet, and one for easements less than three feet. Since our easement measures seven and a half feet, I measured it, I diligently used the Internet in researching the 12 trees on the second list, and chose one tree and two alternates as directed. I did not want a flowering tree, or one that had seed pods, no mess. What was planted on June 21st was not one of my choices, not even one from the appropriate list, but one from the third list that will bear flowers as well as seed pods. I would like this tree removed. A bigger issue, though, are the trees that have been planted from the first list on our street, that are much too large for that size easement. For example, my next-door neighbor had a sweet gum tree planted, which in addition to shedding many spiked gum balls, has a root system that will cause future problems. It will grow to 65 feet also. I know this tree very well, as I recently had one removed from my backyard, because I could not keep up with the mess of the gum balls on my lawn. Several tulip trees have also been planted on our street, again a tree not on our list and too large for the size of our easement. In fact, it is noted on the first list from the, from the DPW that it is the tallest tree east of the Mississippi. I don't know what it's going to do on our street. I am concerned as to why the guidelines proposed by the DPW are not being followed, and I believe we are not the only street facing this problem. If the present initiative by the department was due to concerns of planting one species of tree that could be hit by disease, I believe that this state had and has many resources available to maybe have selected three species of shade trees that are disease-resistant, have proper root systems, were non-messy, grew at the same rate to a reasonable height to provide a canopy of shade trees on our streets. I do not believe that the present variety in sizes, many causing future problems, will enhance the beauty of Livonia streets, or to the curb appeal of individual properties. In addressing my concerns about my own tree to the Forestry Division as to the tree planted in front of my house, I was told, and I quote, "We paid for the tree. I don't know if we will pay to have it removed, and if it is removed, you won't get another tree." My neighbor with a sweet gum tree had the same manner of response. I believe as property owners, we are the ones paying for the trees through our tax dollars, but even so, we seem to have no redress. I invite the members of the city council to visit Kingsbury Street and think of it 10, 15, or 20 years from now. As our elected officials, and as such, our frontline troops, I hope that you will address this issue and find solutions in keeping Livonia full of beautiful neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. West.
I would appreciate any, any comments that you might have.
Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you, Madam President. So about a month ago, we did have, we referred a potential new tree ordinance to the Tree Committee, and I'm one of the members of council that serves on that Tree USA Committee. And so one of, one of our agenda items right now is diving in and looking at all things trees, should we say, to create an ordinance. And I appreciate-
But how is that going to affect the trees that are going to grow 65 feet in 15 years?
You know, just like you said before, you know, obviously, if they're, you know, I can't speak for any of the trees that have been planted, but going forward, you know, I'm taking notes. I plan on visiting Kingsbury to actually see exactly what's going on.
I hope you do. I hope, I hope council will see it, because I'm not going to be around to see it in 10, 15, 20 years, you know, but-
No.
I'm just looking to, to the, to the younger generation that are buying these properties, and I-
I appreciate that, and, no, definitely, I will take you on that word and come and take a look at the street, and that's something I'll put as a talking point in our meeting tomorrow.
So, we don't have any redress to get my, the tree done? No, I'm just-
No, I understand. I wanted to see if anyone else wanted to-
If I may.
Please.
Thank you. Ms. West, could you give the address again of where you're at?
37639 Kingsbury.
Okay. Thank you. I likewise would come out, I'm in that area.
I would appreciate if I left my email or my phone number, that I would be there when you come.
Oh. I don't know if you want to give that over?
No, I don't. Can I, can I call your office and leave?
What I'd, what I'd ask you to do, Ms. West, is to call the council office at 4662250. You can find that in the city directory, too, for the city council office, and leave your information, your contact information with Ms. Kasparich. And the other thing is, I will be happy to ask the administration, get some clarification on, on the policy about when we put in a tree that was not on the list, right?
Right.
And, you know, what, what, why the policy is as it is.
Right.
All right, are there business?
I think so. Are there business cards up there, on the podium?
No.
City Council business cards.
Yeah, right there. Grab one of those.
Right, okay.
Yes. All right, but we do appreciate your remarks and your, you know, your thoughtfulness and details. It's very, very helpful to us when we have specific details to work with. So thank you very much for your thoughts and taking the time to come here tonight.
All right, thank you.
All right. Would anyone else like to address the council? Would anyone else like to address the council?
My name is Marjorie Kapan. I live in Laurel Woods Condominiums. You'll be glad to know, I'm only going to speak very briefly. I had been very agitated for a week or so about the changes to the exercise classes at the Senior Center. I think you all got phone calls about it. I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you who helped us to stay as drop-in classes and keep our instructor, Marcia. It's very important to all of us who attend these classes, and I can't thank you enough for backing us up as you did. And I guess that's really all I have to say, is I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Kapan.
And we do vote, you know.
Before, before we have the next speaker, I'd, I'd like to just briefly address, and then I'll go to my colleagues, the situation at the Senior Center. And, and I endeavor to return all of the phone calls that I got last week. I wasn't able to call everyone back. It was a short week, and there were a lot of things going on. I think I called, was able to call most people. I know that you've heard back from a lot of my colleagues, too. And as, and you, you're free to sit down. You don't just stand at the podium. The, as I've explained, and I think all of us have explained, the Parks and Recreation, or Mr. Davis, Ted Davis, is, is responsible for Parks and Recreation, also now Community Resources, which includes the Senior Center and Greenmead. And Mr. Davis, like all department heads, reports to the mayor. The City Council has no authority or no role in setting policies and programs in, in any of our departments. But what we can do is communicate concerns that we hear from residents. And we heard from a lot of residents about the changes, and I know I did, and I believe other council members as well, talked to Mr. Davis and made sure that the concerns were understood. And I understand that Marcia, Ms. Heads, is going to be retained as a yoga, I know she teaches a number of classes. She's going to be retained as an instructor with the ability for drop-in classes. And I've also, it's been indicated to me that Mr. Davis is going to spend some time at the Senior Center from time to time, hearing, you know, hearing input from the people who do take the classes and use the center. So, your voices are heard. We, we can't always change things. We don't have the authority to do so, but we always appreciate the opportunity. This is a excellent, a very well-run city, and a long history of people from the administration and department heads listening to and working with the legislative body council. So, thank you for coming here tonight to take the time to thank us for getting involved, but we appreciated everyone being engaged and, and understand the value of those programs to the people who use them. So, I don't know, Councilwoman Toye?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I know you did a lot of work on this, as all of us had many of your delightful phone calls and emails. Those were awesome. It, it shows citizen involvement, and that's what we need in government. That's kind of citizen involvement, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent. We need to know those things. As our president has pointed out, we're part-time legislators. We don't run the city day-to-day. That is up to our mayor and our department heads, and she chooses. So, I want to thank you for that, and I do want to apologize for any words that were said to some of you by certain people from the city that did say some things that weren't very kind, and some people were very insulted. So, I, as one council member, would like to apologize for that, and I don't want to get into details on that, but that was uncalled for, and I want you to all know, we value your input and you going to those classes very much, and you are the ones that make that Senior Center very successful, and we appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Toye. Councilmember Donavich?
Thank you, Madam President. To all the residents, the people in the Senior Center, thank you for emailing me and giving me the phone calls. I'm still working on returning those phone calls. I probably have about 15 more phone calls to go through and emails, but I'm doing my best, and I've, I've been working through some of those so far, and, and the people I've spoken to, I definitely understand your concerns, and some of my colleagues made points. At the end of the day, every facility has to operate, operate different, and I understand why there was concerns amongst some of the seniors at the senior facility, and I hope that City Council was able to help with some of those issues. And I look forward to talking to, to the rest of the people that gave me those phone calls, and thank you for your citizen involvement.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we have someone else for audience communication?
I'll make it quick. Good evening. My name is Jerry Hamlin. I live at 18053 University Park Drive. Some of you are probably more familiar with me than you'd like, but I can't tell you how much it means to us to retain that certified instructor with 17 years of experience, our drop-in classes, that we don't have to sign up for eight weeks at a time. We're not punished for not coming to class. We pay as we go, and it's a dollar a session. And we're just really hopeful that this matter is now permanently resolved, and we won't have to revisit it in the future, but thank you, one and all. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Hamlin. Anyone else? Yes, and I'm going to check with our parliamentarian. How much time do we have remaining in this session of audience communication?
We have just a couple minutes.
Okay, we probably have time, and, and let me just reiterate something that the parliamentarian explained. We set aside half an hour at the beginning of every meeting for audience communication. When that half an hour is up, we go on to our regular agenda, but if you, if we don't get to you in the first audience communication, at the end of our regular meeting, we go back to audience communication. So, anyone who didn't have an opportunity to talk to us in the beginning gets to have their, their, their three minutes of fame, if you will, so-
You don't have time now, is that correct?
No, we have, we have time for one more. We have time for one more person, and then we'll ask if there's someone else who wants to speak, and, and I think our regular meeting will actually move pretty quickly tonight.
Well, my name is Carol Ely, and this is Blair Bryson, and we both live in Valleywood Condominiums, Six Mile and Meadowbelt Road. And we came today, we have three other people from our, from our condo complex who came to talk about the service that we're getting from GFL. The city contracts with GFL to provide pickup services, trash pickup services, for all city residents, and we pay taxes, of course, for this privilege. We've had real problems lately in terms of erratic pickups, no pickups, our special pickup. We now have mattresses, mattress in Box Springs that have been sitting in our facility for a month now, waiting for a special pickup. We've called everybody, we've called GFL, we've called the mayor's office, we've called our condo complex company that handles our, our condo, and we've done just about everything we can do that, within our means to do. We get promises of pickups and they don't come, and they don't come on the right day, or it's just been a pretty horrible mess. I'm sure we're not the only ones in the city who have this problem. If they're doing it to us, it probably is happening elsewhere. Trash companies, I know our last trash company, Waste Management, had a little legal problem with offering broths to people, so that's why they're not in, in the, in the woods anymore. And I don't know about GFL, other than the fact that they're a Canadian company, which doesn't really matter one way or the other. We would just like to see that our trash, our recycling, is picked up at, on our scheduled days, and when we call for special pickup, which we do a lot, because we have 84 units in our facility, and obviously, people moving in and out, getting rid of furniture, getting new furniture, getting new appliances. There, there tends to be quite a bit at times, not all the time, but when it stacks up. And we have two dumpsters, one at the north end, one at the south end. We have five recycling buckets at each end, and very often, those are filled by our pickup day, all of them. And then we have these extra special items that we have to keep out there. It doesn't look very good for our complex either, to have those out. So, we just wanted to make you aware. We've got some pictures of what it looks like now, if somebody wants, if you would like to look at them. But we're, we're kind of concerned. We've done everything we can do, and we're, we don't know what to do anymore. We just wanted to let you know.
We can prevent, present a letter which I've described the various issues that we have, and also some photos that we could present.
Thank you. And, and just for the record, could you give us your name and your address?
Oh, I'm Blair Bryson, 29491 Bobrich. If I just have a moment, I'll read this one portion.
I, I think that we are, we, we are out of time, Mr. Bryson. But if you'd like to stay, I think our regular meeting will move along quickly, and we'd be happy to invite you back up for audience communication.
This will be fine, as long as I have the letter.
Okay, thank you. And I think, I think Vice President, you're welcome to sit down, but I think Vice President Barr would like to-
Actually, bef, yeah.
Please, go ahead.
Sir, 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 before you go, can, sir?
Right here.
Can you just, I got Bob Rich. What was your specific address again? And I'll tell you why.
29491.
29491. All right, thanks. I went, I hadn't gotten that right. I want to address the concern that both of you expressed. Number one, just a, a fact check for a second, the, the comment you made about Waste Management, the legal troubles in the past, that was a different company from Waste Management. I'm not going to go into what that was, but just to clear the air for Waste Management, that was not Waste Management. That was having the bribe issues. But as far as the erratic pickup, you're right, you're not the only ones. I, I've had calls from residents about this issue, and I've experienced it myself, and just within the last couple of weeks, looked into that, and I can tell you that as far as the erratic pickup, that is a result, like we're seeing in a lot of places, including fast food restaurants right now, of just not being able to find enough workers. There's, there's workers that are making more money staying home than they can doing that, and, and they're struggling to get workers, and that's, that's a direct result of, of that problem. So, until we get through that, I, I'm not sure how that's going to be resolved. I know the company's struggling with that, too. So, that was the second point. The third point I want to make was just, and this is why I want to make sure I got your address correct, regarding the large items, I, I will make a, it's probably the same phone call others have made, but I'll make a phone call on that to see if we can get a resolution on that. There, there may be a simple explanation for it, but I've got your address here, and pretty confident we could probably get somebody to go look at it.
It has been a struggle in not getting calls back and things like that, and they also have, have, where actually, they're supposed to send a third truck to pick up big stuff. We've never had that. We've always had to depend on the phone calls.
Okay.
Okay, well, thanks a lot.
Thanks for coming.
Madam President?
Councilmember Jolly?
If I could just ask one question to follow up what, what was said by the lady?
Carol.
Are, are you referred to a dumpster pickup, is that correct, or did I mishear you? Do you have a dumpster in your?
Two dumpsters.
Two, two dumpsters.
Okay, and is, just to make sure that we're clear here, those dumpsters are provided for and paid for by the city, or are they privately contracted by your condo association?
Oh, it's the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Everything we have is supposed to be through GFL, which is city.
I, I understand that. Sometimes GFL provides services on a private-for-contract basis. I was not familiar that the city was contracting dumpster service. So, and, and that would make a difference in terms of whether or not this was a city issue, or if it was a private issue between the condo association and GFL. Either way, we're going to make some phone calls and try and help you out here, but that would be a new piece of knowledge for me to understand that we are contracting dumpster service, because I don't think that we do that. So, you might have a private contract between the condo association and GFL as a private garbage hauler, because I'm not familiar with the city having dumpster service for residences.
Yeah, I don't know from the board if we've ever been billed for something like that. I can't say for sure. I'm, I'm just kind of helping, kind of keep things looking nice.
I understand the frustration's the same either way. We'll, we'll look into it for you, though.
Okay, thanks a lot, and have a blessed day. Take care.
Thank you. And, and did you leave, on the letter that you left, is your contact information there, Mr. Bryson, a phone number or something that we can follow up with you? And let me suggest, if you take one of those cards that's up there, I think, up in the corner of the podium, maybe, is there a business card up there? That is the City Council office number on it, and if you would call the City Council office, and you'll probably speak to Ms. Cas, Kasparwich tomorrow, and give us, give her your phone number, then we can follow up with you.
Okay, thanks a lot.
All right.
Take care.
Thank you very much. All right, and with that, we come to the closing of our first session of audience communication, and we thank everyone who was here tonight and communicated with the council. And again, if we didn't get to you, and you'd still like to address the council on anything not in this evening's agenda, we'll go back to audience communication at the end of the regular meeting. At this time, we, I got so caught up in audience communication, I lost track of my agenda here. And we'll also, if, if you're here for audience community, you are welcome to stay, but we take no offense if you don't want to stay for the regular meeting. So, again, we, we don't, we're not disinviting you because we, we love it. We'd like to have the auditorium full for every meeting, for the entire meeting, but we know that not everyone wants to stay for the entire meeting. So, with this, we move on to our next agenda item, which is reports from the mayor and other city officials, and we'll give, we'll give those who wish to leave, just if anybody else, we'll give you a second to, and again, you're, you're not at all being dismissed. We really appreciate your being here, but we understand you might not find the rest of this as interesting as we do. But thank you again. Good night, thank you. All right, now we will continue with the agenda, with reports from the mayor and other city officials, and we have one, we have a communication from the Department of Finance dated June 17th, 2021, forwarding the quarterly investment report for the city of Livonia as of May 31st, 2021, and it's respectfully suggested that the item listed above be received and placed on file for the information of the council. And with that, we move on to our consent agenda, and items tonight, items one through nine are listed on the consent agenda, they're voted on as one item. It doesn't mean that they're any less important than any of the other items on tonight's agenda, but rather that when we, when we reviewed these items in our study meeting of June 28th, they were determined not to be controversial in nature, and so they're, they're voted on as one item, and also, if any member of council doesn't want something on the consent agenda and wants it to be on the regular agenda for discussion, that's what is done automatically. So, if it's on the consent agenda, all members of the council agreed to put it on the consent agenda. So, with that, council?
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Jolly. Councilmember Toye, would you like to support?
Support, yes.
Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on approval of the consent agenda, which is, this evening is items one through nine? Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toye?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre? Aye, and the consent agenda is approved. All right, and then we move ahead with unfinished business, beginning with meetings of the committee, and this is item number 10. This is a committee of the whole meeting of June 16th, 2021, and the subject matter was residential blight, and this was Council Resolution 154-21. Do I give the readout now, or after a motion? Do I give the readout now?
Yeah, readout now.
Thank you. Before we, before a committee report readout, we give the, the readout from the meeting by the chair of the committee before we take any action. And we met on, we met on June 16th, and as the, at 7:00 PM, and as the chair of the, of the committee of the whole, I will read out the report. And we had, let's see, I think we, we had all members of council with us, and we also had Linda Schiel, our city treasurer, Paul Burnier, our city attorney, Mark Termina, our planning economic development director, LaShawn Thomas, our director of governmental affairs, and Bob Strobel, one of our senior building officials, and we also had a number of citizens who were with us. We had a, we had a very robust discussion on the issues of residential blight, excuse me, and also on the enforcement process and ordinances, and how there was a change that took the ability inspectors, building inspectors used to have the ability to write tickets, and with the change in the law enforcement system that they no longer have access to, they lost the ability to, to enforce ordinances, and we are, we are looking at getting that access back for them. We went through the current enforcement process, which, which, and the steps are a warning or correction of violation, a show cause, and a court action, which means that the way things are today, there can be 120 to 180 days between the time the inspection department issues, issues an initial notification of a violation until the responsible individual receives a citation. There was also discussion about a state law that prohibits municipalities from entering private property to trim shrubs. Municipal, municipal workers can only enter to cut grass or remove noxious weeds and trim trees that pose a danger to the right-of-way or destructors. And again, we had additional discussion about giving our inspectors access to the Clemis, the Clemis system, so they could get back to actually writing, writing violations. We also, City Council requested that the inspection department include additional funds in its 2022 budget to add additional inspectors, and ask if there was a possibility of using some of the COVID relief funds we're getting for blight elimination and prevention. We also had a- We also had a discussion of how there is a very low fee, $42 a month for vacant commercial properties. If they don't, if we have to go in and do the maintenance, and that's really a disincentive for a commercial property owner to take care of vacant property, all right? So we want to look at opportunities, or it was decided that we would look at the fee structure and see if maybe that should be raised. So there is a greater incentive for property owners to take care of their vacant properties. And we had a resolution that was offered for council to review the current administrative fees and for vacant blighted residential and commercial properties. We had Wayne County, and I should also mention, we had two, both of our Wayne County commissioners, Terry Markey and David Kanesic there. Representative Kanesic provide updates on the American Rescue Plan funding. The county, told us that the county will receive $340 million in funding. And Commissioners Kanesic and Markey are working with the mayor on opportunities for Livonia to use those funds. A suggestion was made from a resident on an educational program on blight prevention and remediation, and that the city maybe recognize those people who improve their properties. And finally, it was noted that the contact information for ordinance violations on the city website is not easy to find. The council asked the administration to make blight and ordinance violation reporting easier to find on the web seat. To follow up on a prior council recommendation to add a mobile reporting app and explore the possibility of allowing residents to find the status and actions taken on reported violations. So coming out of the committee, we had two resolutions offered. One was to revise the ordinance to allow inspectors to issue civil infractions for violations. And the second was for administrative and council review of the current administrative fees for vacant and blighted residential and commercial properties. And with those, with those recommendations, the item will come out of committee.
Madam Chair.
Yes, council.
Are we going to move those at all? I would like to on the fees.
Okay, so we have, we have Resolution A, which is to allow inspectors to issue civil infractions. And Resolution B, a review of the administrative fees for vacant and blighted residential and commercial properties.
Yes, Resolution B, I think. I mean, both are good, but I don't want to take the whole thing.
So you want to offer Resolution approval, a motion to approve Resolution B?
Yes, please, yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution.
Wait, I need support.
I'll second.
Okay.
Member Toy.
All right, is there any discussion from council or anyone in the audience? So what this would do, this would say that the council's going to get with the administration, which is primarily the inspection department, maybe some input from economic development planning, and certainly in conjunction with the mayor's office and the city attorney, to look at the fee schedule that is currently charged to vacant, commercial, and residential properties. That's right.
No.
No, I'm sorry. She asked for B.
That's all right.
All right, is there any discussion for anyone in the audience? All right, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on approval of Resolution B?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye. And Resolution B is approved. So the council, we will be working with the administration and asking the administration, they'll really take the lead, but will keep us advised of looking at how we can change those fees to encourage owners of commercial and residential vacated properties to do the maintenance, the regular routine maintenance that should be done to keep those properties up. Resolution A was to allow our inspectors to issue civil infractions.
Madam President?
Councilmember Donavick?
I'd like to offer an approving resolution on Resolution A.
I'll support.
Support from Councilmember McCullough?
FDU Vice President?
No, you made the motion, go ahead.
Chippendale. Councilmember Donavick?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to briefly say why I support this resolution. And thank you to all the colleagues that had this, had our committee meeting. Many of us, myself included, hear from residents that complain about blight in communities, whether it be residential or commercial. And I feel it's very important that we address this before it becomes a larger issue. I think Livonia, I know for sure our DPW and our inspectors, they do the best job they possibly can. But I think us on council and working with the administration can really give these folks the resources, the tools they need to really go after the people that aren't taking care of their properties, whether that be residential or commercial. I think it's our responsibility to make sure we take care of our homes, take care of our businesses. And if we on council can partner with the people that are doing this work and giving them the resources they need, I think it's a big win for our community. So thank you to everyone that's been working on this very diligently.
Thank you, Councilmember Donavick. Anyone else? Vice President Barr?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that what we would be doing in approving this tonight is not actually enacting this yet, but this is referring it to law to prepare what the ordinance would look like, which should be voted on at a later time. So I just want to make sure that was clear.
Thank you for that clarification.
Could I point something out, though? If council passes this, it's not going to be a short-term turnaround on this because it's going to require first, the ability to get the Clemis system, which has been a difficulty with dealing with Oakland County. And then it's going to also involve changing the ordinance to allow a civil infraction. So it's not a quick turnaround like we tried to have on it, so.
Thank you. You took the words right out of my mouth, Mr. Burnier, and said them better than I would have.
I doubt it.
Thank you for setting the expectations. And we will be working on this aggressively. But because it's a multi-step process, and we know that we've had some issues in trying to get access to the Clemis system from Oakland County, we, you know, it may take some back and forth, but there will be aggressive work to move this along.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so what you'll see in a meeting, we hope, within several months, is we will be voting, this ordinance will, the law department will submit an ordinance to us on this issue for our approval. Anyone else from the audience who'd like to comment on this? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you take the vote on the motion to approve Resolution A?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the motion carries. So we will be referring this to the Department of Law. And as they do, I'm sure the Department of Law will keep us updated. And so if you want to call your council members, time to time, to see what's going on, we'll be happy to update you. All right, we now go to unfinished business, beginning with item number 11. And this is a block party request that came to us from Maria Diaz to be held Saturday, July 31, 2021, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. on Yale Street before the intersection of Yale and Barber with no rain date requested. Is Ms. Diaz here?
Madam President?
Councilmember Jolly?
If Ms. Diaz is not here, I'll offer denying. We put this on the regular agenda to allow her an opportunity to come before the council. And as far as I understand, there's been no contact.
And I assume that Sarah, Ms. Kasparwitch, has been in touch with the petitioner, as you are, to let petitioners know of the expectation to be here. All right, so a denying resolution has been offered by Councilmember Jolly.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Barr, any discussion?
Can I ask?
Yes.
May I ask a question? How did we try and contact her? By phone, by horseback, how did we?
Both.
Both, okay. All right, I just wondered, I wanted to be clear for the record so that if anybody comes back, you know, to say something.
I don't, I don't...
Just question.
No, and I don't need... I don't need to, that's a good question. I don't need to speak on Sarah's behalf. But I do know from our conversations when we review agenda items that Ms. Kasparwitch is very, very diligent in using any contact information we have to let people know that they're expected to be there.
Absolutely, thanks.
So thank you. All right, any other communication? Anyone from the audience? All right, Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll call vote on the denying resolution?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the denying resolution is approved. So Ms. Diaz's request for a block party is denied. Item number 12 is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance. Number 543 is amended. This comes just from the Department of Law. And this is a petition submitted by, it's petition number 2021-04-01-02, submitted by Crosswind to rezone the properties at 37711, 37631, and 37601 Plymouth Road, located on the south side of Plymouth Road between Newburgh Road and Jarvis Avenue in the southeast quarter of Section 30C1, local business to RC Condominium Residential. The public hearing was held on June 21, 2021.
I'll offer an approving.
Support.
And we have support from Councilmember...
Excuse me, that's a first reading, my bad.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, that's...
I'll offer a first reading.
Thank you. So Councilmember Jolly is offering a first reading. When we have proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, they're given what's called a first reading. And then we, and then we go to a, we required our processes, site plan, so we understand what it's going to look like before we move ahead with the final vote, the roll call vote on the actual amendment of the zoning ordinance. Number 13 is the appointment of Scott Morgan to the Zoning Board of Appeals. This came to us from Kathy White, council member, for a three-year term which will expire on July 12, 2024.
Madam President?
Mr. Barr?
I move approval.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Donavick. Any discussion? Anyone from the audience? Did you have, please?
Yeah, sure. I wasn't here at the last meeting when this was a study meeting. I was on my way back from vacation. So I just want to take the opportunity here. Scott Morgan's got the relevant experience for this job. He's familiar with the city, he's familiar with our ordinances. He's got the dedication and attention to detail, and most importantly, the expressed desire to serve. I'm going to speak to the elephant in the room. Obviously, Scott Morgan's a candidate for city council. I look at that, and the key point that I'm looking at with something like this is that we're looking for someone who exhibits the qualities that we want on Zoning Board of Appeals, which I think he, far and away, exhibits those qualities. And as far as upcoming elections go and his clear desire to serve, if he were, if he were to lose in the election this fall, then the ZBA benefits from his services. If he were to win, I know of no better training ground for city council than the Zoning Board of Appeals. Either way, I think the residents of Livonia are well-served. So it's with enthusiasm that I would support this tonight.
Thank you, Vice President Barr, anyone else? Would anyone from the audience like to comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll call vote on the appointment of Scott Morgan to the ZBA for a three-year term?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and Mr. Morgan's appointment is approved unanimously. Thank you. We go on to item number 14. This is the reappointment of Gregory Coppola to the Zoning Board of Appeals. This was offered by Rob Donavick for a three-year term, which would also expire on July 12, 2024.
Madam President?
Councilmember?
I'd like to offer an approving.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Toy, any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Please.
Mr. Gregory Coppola has been an excellent contributor to the zoning board. He's got the experience level. He was president. He goes out and looks at all these properties, and he listens to folks.[1533.78]